All right, we are live.
Live feed is up and running. The meeting is yours, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Campo. Good morning to everyone, and I would like to welcome everyone to the City of Kenner March 26 Council Meeting. And before we get started, as always, proper order to be able to have our invocation. And we are blessed today to have Pastor Jackie Brown from District One. And Pastor Brown, thank you for participating today. And it's all yours.
Praise God. Hallelujah. Thank you, dear God. Father, we just bless you and we give you praise and honor and glory, dear God, for all that you've done, all that you're doing, and all that you will do. We bless you, oh Lord. We bless you that you are an example. You are that very image that we follow, oh God. We know that this is the day that you have made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it, dear God. We thank you, oh Lord, for one more day. We thank you, oh God, for your son, Jesus Christ, and for your Holy Spirit, who lives on the inside of you. For it is you, oh God, who calls us to live and to move and to have our being, oh God. And we thank you. We thank you, dear God, for strength. We thank you for healing and help in this very serious time, this pandemic of COVID-19, oh God. We thank you, oh Lord, for the peace and the love and the comfort for those of us who have lost loved ones, oh God. And Lord, we thank you that you will annihilate the social, the economic, and the racial injustices all over this world, because evil is all around us, oh God. Thank you, oh Lord. Thank you, oh God, that only you, oh God, by your Holy Spirit can change the hearts of men, to renew the heart so that people begin to love and to live and to respect each other. Thank you, dear God, for changing our hearts. Thank you, dear God, for changing our hearts when we say that we belong to you, oh God, that we serve you, and we say it, but we don't do it. We ask you, Holy Spirit, to continue to guide us, to direct us, and Lord, that you will manifest your power, your love, and your truth through us, that our prayer will be. Change my heart, oh God. Make it ever true. Change my heart, oh God. May I be like you. You are the potter. I am the clay. Mold me and make me. This is what I pray. Change my heart, oh God. Change my, change my heart, oh God. Make it ever true. Change my heart, oh God. May I be like you. May I be like you. Hallelujah. Thank you, dear God. Amen and amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate it. Mayor Zahn, would you like to right now?
Yes, for special intentions, we need to remember the victims of the shootings that just happened recently. We have eight deceased in Atlanta, Georgia, and we also have 10 deceased, including one police officer in Boulder, Colorado. So let's keep those, all those families, all those individuals, all those victims in our thoughts and prayers. Very serious times that we're going through. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'd like to have special intentions. I was requested by the local paramedics at EJ. One of their own, Dion Gullig, is in the ICU currently with COVID-19. She's served the City of Kenner for 26 years. She's only 48 years old, and the majority of her career has spent been serving the citizens of Kenner. So I just want to ask for prayers and prayers of support that she, you know, there's a miracle and that she can come back. Everyone, and many people in our community have been affected by COVID in various ways, either loved ones or economically. So let's just pray for her and for all of those first responders, especially those paramedics who, you know, who are serving the community. So please pray for her and hopefully she gets a full recovery.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate all those special intentions thus far. And I ask that you also please pray for Dennis Acre, who is battling a very serious illness at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see any. The next, and to stay in accordance and to always represent all of the ladies, young girls that are part of our city, our country. This is the month of March. We are recognizing them as International Women's Month or Women's Day, however you want to say it, but they are very important. So on that, because of that, I would ask all the females who are listening to my voice to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I would be honored for you ladies. You can start it, Ms. Foshee.
Thought you just might see my lips moving. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. You have a quorum. Are there any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor this morning? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of March 11, 2021. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 2227-21, custom crew, public gathering, from March 27, 2021, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And on April 24th, May 22nd, June 26th, July 24th, August 28th, September 25th, and August, October 23rd, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the purpose of a cruise night at the Esplanade Mall. Item 3B is application number 2225-21, Our Lady of Perpetual Help Roman Catholic Church, to hold a public gathering on April 4, 2021, from 6:30 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. for the purpose of an Easter sunrise service at La Salle's Landing, Williams and Third Street in Kenner, Louisiana. Item four is correspondence reports from the mayor, C.A.O., and department heads. Item 4A, at the request of the administration, a report from Mayor Zahn.
Mayor Zahn, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. And I do want to apologize. I was supposed to tell you at the beginning that I do have a proclamation, so if you could bear with me to do a proclamation for someone we all know. And I hope Mr. Al Morella is on the, on the call. I know he's not on Zoom, but he might be on the call. Mr. Morella was talking to myself, and also Councilman Brennan had brought up in the past, and also Councilman Segura. We needed to recognize Monte Briggs. We all know Monte Briggs. He was always very big with the BFW Hall and would always lead our Memorial Day and Veterans Day celebrations in Veterans Park right here in the City of Kenner. So I'd like to do a small proclamation for him, presented to Mr. Morella to bring to the BFW Hall to hang there, and also have Mr. Morella get into the family. Whereas Monte Ray Briggs, born July 11, 1942, in Baker, Montana, grew up in Miles City, Montana. Whereas in 1959, Monte joined the Navy. He served in the Vietnam War as a search and rescue for downed pilots from USS Boots. Pearl Harbor was his last duty station. After serving 20 years of active service, he received an honorable discharge. Whereas after retiring, he made his home in Hawaii and worked at Pearl Harbor Shipyard. Monte was a lifetime member of the BFW and Fleet Reserve Association. In 1999, he moved to Kenner to be closer to his children and worked at Avondale Shipyard. He continued to be actively involved in the BFW, the Fleet Reserve, and American Legion. He was also a current commander of the BFW Post 7732 since 2015. Whereas Monte Briggs unexpectedly passed away on January 10, 2021, in Honolulu, Hawaii. He is survived by his wife Lawrence Briggs, of 24 years, and his four children, three stepchildren, 14 grandchildren, and 20 great-grandchildren, nieces, nephews, and friends. Now therefore, I, Ben Zahn, by the authority vested me as the mayor of the City of Kenner, the City of Council, and the Chief of Police, do hereby recognize and thank Monte Ray Briggs for his dedicated service to our country and to our community. Again, Mr. Briggs was very, very instrumental in all of our Veterans Day and Memorial Day celebrations. It's unfortunate because we missed a year of celebrating with Monte because of the pandemic on these two occasions as we start to work getting back to doing something in May. We'll definitely miss him and will definitely recognize him at the Memorial Day celebration, which will be small, but still getting back to something, some type of normalcy where we can recognize him at Memorial Day. Thank you, Council Chairman. Before I go into my comments, I don't know if any of the council people know, Councilman Segura had something to say.
Awesome, Mr. Segura.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, just to elaborate on what the mayor said, Mr. Monte Briggs was certainly a big fixture of our memorial and Veterans Day ceremonies, always there to keep us in line with what the military traditions were and make sure that the reef was properly laid at the memorial. So it is a shame that we will be missing him when we do get back live at the event. But the next one, we will certainly pay tribute and remember him for all that he's done for us. So, thank you.
I do have the proclamation right here, so we can see that it will go to Al Morella to go to the BFW Hall, and if Al can get one to the family, I would appreciate it. Al will make sure we get that to you.
Mayor, I think Al wanted to say a few words.
Sure.
Go ahead, Al.
Al Morella, 52, 60, 30, 29 years. Forget my voice is a little weak, but I'm going to talk as loud as I can. First of all, first and foremost, I want to thank Ms. Taylor LeCarne for the work she put in with us, communication with me to make this happen. I want to also thank the mayor and his office, and everybody else who was involved in making this happen. And I'm sure the Briggs family will be very grateful for all the help and all the work you all done with me to make this happen. Thank you, Mayor.
No problem, Al. Is that all the people that want to speak?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any more hands up.
Okay. So, good news. I'll have a quick present, mayor comments today. I know they've been long lately. Our taxes for March of this, this, we received for March from this year, we're down 4%, which is $124,000 compared to this time last year. In the fiscal year, if you take a look at it that way, it's 3.5 million, which is a total of 12.21%, something we have to continue to watch. You hear me talk about that every time I get one of these reports. It's critical. We need to watch that. We're going into budget season. A lot to look at. On some good news things, our code department, what they're doing out there with code sweeps, with the help of the District One Office, we looked at 200 to 400 blocks of Coleman and Pollock, 10 violations. On March 25th, we looked at the 100 to 300 blocks of Emerson and Furman Circle with the help of the District One Office. Councilman Carroll, again, 36 violations, 23 warning violations, one court summons. Seems that area is a little high, so we absolutely have to watch that. But I do appreciate the work that James Mohammed, Molly McGinnis, and all the men and ladies of the Code Department continue to do. Those are the things that are going on currently. Something that's extremely important that's going on right now, now that we have the military renewals done for the parish, which did pass, their renewals, their continuations, I think the son said. We are replacing their signs, which Deborah Foshee worked out with Steve LeShute over in the parish, right under Cynthia, to flop, flip their signs to our sign locations and put up our military renewals, which is on the April ballot. Chris Fortunato has come in to help us with this. I want to, I want to say thank you to Chris Fortunato and everyone who's involved with the KTV, Kenner Media Group, getting those things done. I see that the signs flipped over like immediately on Monday or Tuesday. We have a few more locations to do to remind our residents that we have some just simple renewals, military renewals, not a new tax. Chris Fortunato is here. If I could pass it on to her, Council Chairman, if you don't mind, so that she can bring us up to date on where we are. She may have a video, and I would like Adam to explain the video, just in case there's any glitches before Chris gets started. Adam, do you want to make a comment on that?
Sure, I can. Just to let everybody know, when the video does play, there may be some lag based upon the speed of your home connection or your office connection or wherever you're at. You will be able to view the video on our website and our Facebook page, though, if you visit kenner.la.us.
Mr. Fortunato? Are we going to see the video during the council meeting?
Right now. Right now.
Before, before Ms. Fortunato speaks?
No.
Chris is going to sneak in and go into it.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm so sorry. Just a very brief introduction to the video. Kenner Media produced this, this and three other videos, informational videos, to provide information to Kenner citizens, to help them educate themselves on what these three millage renewals are all about. And these were produced in-house. And this video we're going to show you today is one of those. It's a comprehensive video that covers information on, on the three millage renewals on the ballot on April 24th in Kenner. So let's go ahead and roll that brief video, and then I'll conclude it with a very brief announcement.
Thank you.
On April 24th, voters in Kenner will decide whether to continue three existing millages, which provide funding to three critical services, fire protection, garbage, and sewer. These are not new taxes. They would continue funding that's been in place for the last 10 years. The renewal of 7.4 mills for fire protection would continue to provide funding for vital fire protection services for the City of Kenner. For the first time in the city's history, Kenner has achieved a Class 1 fire rating, which qualifies homeowners and businesses for insurance discounts. Kenner is one of only 13 municipalities in the state to reach this prestigious ranking. Kenner currently has 102 firefighters stationed in six firehouses, protecting nearly 70,000 citizens and businesses. Last year, Kenner firefighters responded to 179 fire emergencies, 882 rescues and EMS calls for service, 174 responses to hazardous conditions, and 171 calls for public assistance, which could even include the tiniest creatures in need of help. This millage renewal would continue to help fund necessary and ongoing life-saving water rescue, active fire, hazardous materials, and other important training for our firefighters, and upgrade necessary firefighting equipment, such as pump trucks, rescue vehicles, and fire facilities. The Kenner Fire Department relies on this millage for more than a third of its funding. The continuation of the 1.61 garbage millage pays for trash collection and waste removal from the city's residences and businesses, landfill fees, as well as services and maintenance provided at the city's Woody Waste Drop Off and Recyclable Transfer Station. All trash pickup vehicles and drivers are constantly monitored to ensure the entire process is timely and efficient. Nearly 80% of the funding for sanitation service in Kenner is provided through this millage and a monthly user fee. The city handles 1.4 billion gallons of sewage every year, which drains from our homes and businesses into the city's sewage system, travels through hundreds of miles of pipeline, and undergoes a rigorous 10-hour treatment and sedimentation process before being pumped to the river. The renewal of this essential 1.14 mills would continue funding the safe and efficient operation of the plant day to day, responsive maintenance for immediate repairs, and ongoing preventive maintenance, as well as any necessary improvements to an aging system. The City of Kenner is saving an estimated $1 million in management fees since acquiring autonomous control of the sewer department. This millage and a monthly user fee of $4.35 per 1,000 gallons on each water bill help fund these important sewer services for Kenner residents. Here's how you can determine how much it'd pay using this example. A mill is equal to 1/10 of 1 cent and is how officials assess property tax. Property taxes are based upon the assessed value of a person's home minus the homestead exemption. For example, if your home is assessed at $250,000, subtract the $75,000 homestead exemption to get the taxable value, in this case, $175,000. Residential property is assessed at 10%. Multiply the assessed value by 1 mill. Multiply that by the millage rate, in this case, 1.14 for sewer service, and that comes to $19.95 per year, or $1.66 per month. Voters in the City of Kenner will decide whether to continue these three existing millages, which provide funding to three critical services, fire protection, garbage, and sewer. These are not taxes and have already been in place for the last 10 years. Early voting begins April 10, and Election Day is April 24.
So, once again, thank you to our creative team with Kenner Media, Charles Alon, Robin Delafour, and Bobby O'Shields, and also Bob Ross, who is also helping us out with disseminating this information. These videos, this one and three other additional smaller videos, which explain each millage renewal, are all available on the city's website, are all available on all of the city's Facebook pages relative to this. And I just want to remind everyone that we will have a public Zoom meeting where the public can submit their questions in advance, and they will be answered at the Zoom meeting. The Zoom meeting is scheduled for April 6 at 6:00 p.m., and you can submit questions to millageinfo@kenner.la.us. And that email address to submit questions is also on the city's website. Every material is also translated in Spanish, and you can look forward in your mail to receiving some specific information, helpful information about the military renewals also.
Fortunato, thank you. The video was professionally done. We appreciate that for yourself and all the men and women that worked on this particularly. I would ask, on behalf of myself and the council, if you, could you send that video to each one of us so we can put it on our individual Facebook pages as opposed to?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We'll send it to you directly, the specific link. You may have already received it in the news release that was sent out on Monday, but I'll make sure that we send you, each of our council members, the individual link, so that'll be much easier to post on your Facebook pages. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And also, if there is some type of flyer for the upcoming April 6 Zoom meeting on it, if there's something you guys have made, so I can post, so we can post that as well.
Sure. We'll, we'll send all of that information to you once again, so everyone can post it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman, anything military-related, we will, anything related to anything we do in the city, but right now, what you're asking for, anything for these renewals, for these militages, we will definitely get to y'all. And we would appreciate y'all sharing it, posting on your Facebook pages, talking to civic associations, talking to your civic leaders, because it is important that we get that message out and people know that it's not a new tax.
Yeah, thank you. I look forward to sharing it on my Facebook page and, and my assistant to share it on social media as well.
Perfect. That'd be perfect. That's all I have, Councilman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, that will conclude your consent agenda.
Motion by Councilwoman McKenney, second by Councilman Wilmot, to approve. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Hey.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item nine, public hearings for final passage. Item 9A is summary ordinance number 12,814, an ordinance amending Special Ordinance 7746 to allow Five Guys Burgers and Fries to operate a restaurant less than 150 feet from the southern line of Lot Y-1-B2, Chateau Estate subdivision.
Motion by Councilmember Branigan, second by Councilwoman McKenney, to open the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Councilman McKenney?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to open your hearing.
Mr. Campo, do we have any, anyone in the audience to address?
We do. Ms. Stacy Alessandro has her hand up.
Ms. Stacy.
Also have a
Oh, we have a presentation?
Yeah, Council President, Plant Department.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Let me share the screen real quick. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. The applicant in this particular case, or the owner of the property, excuse me, is Chateau Commons LLC, 3636 South Sherwood Forest Boulevard, Baton Rouge, 70816. The applicant is Bayou's Best Burgers LLC, doing business at Five Guys Burgers and Fries, 324 East Lockwood Street, Covington, Louisiana, 70433. The subject property is bound by West Esplanade Avenue on the north, Mayfair Lane on the south, Chateau Boulevard on the east, and Napa Lane on the west. Currently, the site is developed as the Chateau Commons Shopping Center, 816 West Esplanade Boulevard. The applicant, as part of their requirements, conducted an early neighborhood meeting. They sent, due to COVID, there was no physical early neighborhood required for this case. The applicant stated that they sent out approximately 48 letters to the surrounding property owners within 250 feet of the property, identifying what they were proposing and to offer a chance for neighbors to contact them with any questions or concerns. They indicated they received two email responses from two neighbors who indicated support for the proposal and a phone call from one of the neighbors, which they discussed some of her concerns. There is no there is no new development being proposed by Five Guys as part of their request. They are seeking to lease an existing 2,312 square foot space, excuse me, in building A of the Chateau Commons Shopping Center. The space is located on the east side of the building. Since there is no new development planned, Five Guys will be utilizing all the existing infrastructure related to parking, landscaping, loading zones, ingress/egress points, and pedestrian access currently developed for the shopping center. They will be, they will be having one dumpster to service only the Five Guys Restaurant that we located on the east side of the building. The city code requirements are designed to prevent trash, waste, and grease from escaping the corral. Some of these code requirements include, but are not limited to, hot and cold running water for cleaning and sanitizing the dumpster area, a 6-inch by 6-inch by 6-inch deep sanitary sewer drain, four walls, and a cover for the dumpster corral to prevent trash from escaping and grease from washing into the stormwater drainage system, a grease trap, among other numerous code requirements. They are proposing a one-attached sign, a 62.08 square foot attached sign saying Five Guys, mounted to the brick facade above the entrance to the restaurant. The sign will have facelit channel lettering. They will also have one tenant panel, which will be included on the shopping center's monument sign. This will be very similar to the attached, to the attached sign, but sized to fit into the space on the monument sign. The, while the planning commission voted to recommend denial, I would like to make some additional points that the field of the Plant Department feels are important regarding this request. The Five Guys Burgers and Fries is a billion-dollar-plus international company, recognized internationally, regionally, and locally. They have locations They have locations in all 50 states, including 17 here in Louisiana. Their interest in locating in Kenner is a significant boost to the overall economic development climate for the city. Now, the Chateau Commons Shopping Center, where Five Guys wants to lease space, isn't, you know, one of Kenner's major retail and commercial developments. It's located along a major commercial corridor with access to most parts of Kenner and to a large surrounding consumer base. However, currently, the building where Five Guys seeks to locate has nearly 12,400 square feet of unused commercial space. And you can see this on the tax plan to make it space. That represents about 58% of the building. This underutilized commercial space financially impacts the owner and it reduces the impact of sales and other taxes on the city of Kenner's bottom line. A Five Guys in that space has huge potential to attract other businesses to that site as well as to the city in general, which will obviously increase the overall tax base for the city. It's also important to note that the Five Guys franchisees have committed to making it a top priority to operate a clean and trash-free business and will work every day to keep their store and surrounding space clean and free of all trash and to not let trash pile up in their dumpster. In addition, the ownership of Chateau Commons also committed to addressing any of the current issues that are creating problems at that development. Based on the planning department feels that having Five Guys in Kenner will be a tremendous economic asset to the city. And therefore, the planning department supports this request. That is the, that concludes the planning department's.
Thank you, Mr. DeFor. Mr. Campo, is Ms. Stacy still there?
Yes, councilman.
Ms. Stacy, you have the floor, please.
Hello, thank you. Um, I just, I, I just had a couple of questions. I do live in this neighborhood and I was very excited to hear that we might be getting a Five Guys. So I'm all for us getting a Five Guys in District Four and, and just in North Kenner especially. I just, I just had a couple of questions, that's all. I was wondering if maybe perhaps Mr. DeFor or anybody else could maybe tell the public, why did the planning commission recommend denial? What were their concerns? And could we, could we know all of those concerns that they had? And how is each one of those going to be addressed so that this can be successful? And that also it doesn't impact the immediate neighbors? I did read the emails and stuff that was attached to this legislation. And I did see that one of my neighbors has some serious concerns, which I don't, I don't blame her. She's concerned that, you know, the employees may be in the back smoking and that would be a strong odor, you know, in that area if that happens a lot. Maybe some additional questions about rodents, you know, if we're going to have dumpsters and stuff with, you know, old food and such, especially hamburgers and things. I mean, these are legitimate concerns, but I feel like they can probably be overcome if we just have some solutions that we can know of ahead of time. Like, how do y'all plan on addressing that particular neighbor's concerns? Like, I, I just want to feel safe that I want the Five Guys here, but I also want to feel safe in knowing that my neighbors aren't going to be negatively impacted. Like, you know, what can we do just to make this work? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. And it's always good, since being the fact that you live in that community, to ask questions like that. Councilman Branigan would like to speak, but I would like to ask Mr. DeFor, unless Mr. Councilman Branigan was at the meeting, to address your first questions, the concerns of the committee.
That's fine. Yeah, Wendell, let him answer that. But I do have some answers that should satisfy Ms. Alessandro's question.
Yes, sir. So, Mr. DeFor, could you address your question?
So, a lot of the issues that were raised at the planning commission meeting, which I think probably had an impact on their decision, were issues that are currently, you know, affecting the development, which have nothing to do with the Five Guys. You know, obviously, they haven't even, you know, opened up there yet. So the issues with smoking and trash, those are existing. And, you know, the Five Guys representative at the meeting committed, you know, to making sure that the dumpster was going to be, you know, built according to the specifications of the city, which I mentioned in my report, are quite strict, you know? There's going to be hot and cold running water. It's going to be fully covered and walled in. So there should be no trash or water or anything that should be able to escape from that dumpster. You know, there were some issues brought up related to drainage and stuff. And obviously, while those are concerns, they don't relate to the Five Guys. And so the property owner was also at the planning commission. And he pledged that he would address any of the current issues that were brought up. So I think, you know, from the planning department's perspective, Five Guys has, you know, committed to making sure that they're not going to contribute to any of the existing problems that may or may not be, you know, happening at that location right now. Once they're able to move in, they're going to be good neighbors. They're going to keep their store clean. They're going to keep the space around them clean. They said they'd keep additional space clean if that meant helping, you know, satisfy some of the neighbors. So I hope that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Councilman Branigan, you have the floor.
Yes. In regards to Stacy's concerns, the Wendell is correct that when I was on that meeting, watching the meeting, and the questions that popped up were about employees smoking behind businesses, the trash that's behind that development, water that's building up behind the development. So the next morning, I went out and I took a video of the back of the building with the trash and the water buildup. And I contacted the owner of the building, sent him the videos, and told him that he needs to get the thing cleaned up. And we need to talk about some type of, some type of subsurface drainage to get the water out because it is affecting the resident's property that backed up to it. There are also concerns in regards to the garbage site. And Billy, Billy Jacob, the franchisee from Five Guys, gave me the information about how their dumpster is going to be put in, and how it's going to be surrounded. They are going to be using the Department of Health and Hospitals compliance rules in order to make sure that there's no smell going into the neighborhood from garbage. And they will be picking garbage up six days a week. And they assured me that these compliances that are going to go through the Department of Health and Hospitals makes it so that you're not going to have a bad odor or smell. It will be clean. The trash will be contained inside of an enclosed structure that no one is going to even be able to see the garbage can. The, the property owner has to deal with the other tenants to clear, make sure that people are not going behind the stores and smoking and talking and whatever. You know, that's not a Five Guys problem. And the way I see it is the Five Guys franchise, store is not even there. So these problems have nothing to do with them. Five Guys is a family-owned business since 1986. It is a worldwide company. And the bottom line is, you know, when we have the opportunity for a worldwide company to locate in our city, the message needs to be sent that we want as many of them as we can get. And it will help us from a sales tax point. I think that this location is going to be a great location for this business. But these guys have committed to me to make sure that they will do everything to minimize the impact of that store being there. These people behind them may not even know they're there.
Thank you, councilman. Ms. Stacy? Do you have, did they, did they answer your questions or?
Yeah, yes, Council President Carroll, they did. And thank you for that explanation, Mr. DeFor and Councilman Branigan. I, like I said, I just, I want to reiterate, I'm very excited to have Five Guys. I welcome them to our neighborhood. And I just, I feel much more secure in this, you know, hearing that they're committed to keeping the neighbors happy. So thank you. Again, welcome Five Guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stacy, for your attendance in this. Mr. Campo, do we have anyone else?
We, we had a few other hands pop up, but I think Councilman Wilmot would like to speak.
Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know I'm going to have an opportunity in a little while, but at this point, I think it's more relevant to say what I want to say now. I just believe that Ms. Stacy Alessandro is spot on. I too welcome Five Guys into Kenner. And of course, we need to address the property owner issues. And listening to Councilman Branigan with what he has remarked on these major issues or concerns, it sounds like they're being, the problems are being remediated the best that can be done. So I just wanted to echo Ms. Alessandro's thoughts. And I believe that she's spot on and I feel the same. So I want to hear what else has to be said for the rest of this issue. So thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Mayor Zahn, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Council Chairman. Everything Councilman Branigan said, absolutely. And would also, I want to thank Wendell for that presentation. You know, you never know what the board's going to do. And that's what the board's there to do, what they feel is best. But I think the planning department has stated the economic impact that it will have. And like Councilman Branigan, I have spoken with the franchisee. He is, he's very excited about it. And I, I like Councilman Branigan. We've both met with these people a few times. Five Guys has been coming around Kenner for quite a long time. I want to thank Councilman Branigan, though, for kind of sealing the deal when he ran into him at another, at another restaurant and they just started up a conversation because that got him back to the table again. And as George knows, we sat down with him immediately after that. We wasted no time and they weren't even looking for this spot. They were looking at other spots. They were looking for spots closer to the interstate. For them to choose this spot that's not right by the interstate, that's not right where they initially wanted to be, I think is great. And George agrees with that. So again, thank you, George, for happening to be in the right place at the right time to get them back to the table and get them back to the table of the city of Kenner. Because this will be huge. The planning department sees the impact. The councilman sees the impact. I think the rest of the council sees the impact. I think the majority of constituents see the impact. This administration absolutely sees it. This, this shopping center is not depressed. It's not going through a lot of problems. I think this is one of only maybe two other spots that are open, but across the street is. So hopefully that helps generate across the street too. Hopefully it helps generate, it will generate more sales tax and also across the street. So again, I want to thank everybody involved from my department to Councilman Branigan's office and all of you all who are about to vote on this. And also Economic Development Department, because whatever they can do to assist Five Guys coming in, I know they will be there and it'll be able to help them and that board also. So again, George, most, most of you, George, thank you for making them stay right here in Kenner and helping them stay in District Four.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Campo, did any of the citizens come back to speak?
Yes, they did. Mr. Richard Brown has his hand up. And then there's Mr. Greg Teft after that.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. My concern was based the same as Stacy Alessandro's. And I think my concerns have been addressed. I learned about Five Guys wanting to come to Kenner in that location weeks ago and was excited. I'm still excited, anxious to have them. But I was very concerned to learn that the planning commission had recommended not approving this and that, that caused me concern. I would like to know a little more about their reasons. But hearing what Mr. DeFor had to say and also knowing how George Branigan has worked on this, I feel like the concerns are being, being addressed. And I appreciate what all of you have done and what I heard.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Teft, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, I just have, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Introduce yourself, Mr. Teft.
This is Greg Teft. I'm in University City. But, but I do want to ask one question because after hearing what Councilman Branigan said and Sadgar, and this is more directed at code enforcement more than anything else, is that if there's standing water and trash such behind that building, isn't that an issue that code enforcement should be looking at? Especially the standing water that causes the sprays and such? And it does kind of, yeah, since it's your neighborhood, it does affect. Shouldn't that be something that code enforcement should be addressing? That's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Teft. And Mr. Teft was kind of muffled, but he made a comment to the point that, isn't that the responsibility? Or is this should be something that our code department should be looking into? Not saying they're not looking into it, but even now, since this has become front and center. And Director Mohammed, if you would like to address her, please.
Councilman Carroll, it's the first time that we've heard about this. I can assure you that I'm going to go out there and address it after this council meeting, like I do everything else that's brought up to my attention. If it would have been brought up to my attention before, we'd have addressed it. But this is the first time hearing about it. And I guarantee within 10 minutes of the council meeting, and then I'll be out there looking at it.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Branigan, you have the floor.
Yeah, in regards to the code enforcement department going out and, and, and looking at this, they probably would not have seen it unless we got a complaint. My office has never received a complaint about water buildup or trash behind a building or Mr. Mohammed would have known about it. And whenever I call him, he's Johnny on the spot and takes care of things. So in order for the code department to have to go out, we would have to be notified, I would think, to look at that problem and then forward it to the code department. So that's my feelings and thought process.
Thank you, Councilman Branigan. And Ms. Fauché, not, not, and I guess this is, this is somewhat associated with that. If you can just give us a yes or no or up or down as the new system that we're putting into place, the Q and not, the, the Q, if you can just address that, I would appreciate it.
Q-SIN, not Q and non. Let's not get those two confused, okay? Q-SIN, the complaints go into Q-SIN based upon reporting. So if anyone sees it, it can be reported. It's also a tracking system. So at this point, when Mr. Mohammed goes to inspect, if it's not something that's fixed on the site, then he will place it in the Q-SIN system. And then we will receive updates as the, as the improvements are being made. So as I understand it, although Mr. Mohammed should probably address this, as he'll go out, he'll inspect, he'll give a warning in a period of time to come into compliance. If they fail to come into compliance within that period of time, he will go back out with stronger enforcement measures. But Q-SIN itself is a tracking mechanism. And so if it gets placed in either by Mr. Mohammed or a member of the public, we'll be able to pick it up and work from there.
So thank you very much. And as far as it relates to the Q-SIN, Mr. Teft is now, he does now have the ability and the system is up that he can go in there right now and submit that information or anyone?
He absolutely does. And I would love the opportunity to talk to him about it because I don't think we've actually had a conversation about Q-SIN. But absolutely, it's available to any member of the public. And once you as a member of the public sign up for it and you put anything in the system, you can go back in and check the status of everything you reported. So it's a, it's a wonderful tracking tool for us. It's a wonderful follow-up tool for you. Doesn't mean you can't still do it the old-fashioned way. Pick up the phone, give us a call. We'd love to talk to you. But for some who are, you know, more interested in or would like the redundancy of an additional system, that tracking system is out there and available to the public.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Campo, is there anyone else?
There are no other hands raised.
I don't see any hands from the council or the mayor. So that being said, motion by, oh, Councilman Branigan, you have the floor, sir.
I just want the residents of Holly Heights, Westwood, to know that if there is a problem, all they have to do is call my office, call my cell phone, and I will handle it that day. If there are any concerns, once if this is approved and there are problems in that arena, they, all they have to do is call and I will take care of it.
Thank you, councilman. Councilwoman McKenney?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say that I think that this is a great opportunity for the city of Kenner to locate Five Guys. And, you know, I think the residents, the majority of the residents are in favor of this. And, and I appreciate Councilman Branigan working with the owners as well as Director DeFor, working with the owners to make sure that, that those concerns are heard. to make sure that uh that those concerns are he heard and that the owners um are and the owners and the operators are going to to make sure that those are top priorities. Uh you know, we want to be good partners. We want to be good community partners. And I think, as I said, um I think this is going to be a great addition to the city um as well economically as well as culturally. So thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Wilmot.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh I just want to say that that um you know, I've had numerous conversations with Wendell Dufour and quite lengthy, in fact, uh and he's he's been a champion of explaining uh a lot of details as well as Ms. Foshee. I appreciate y'all's input and 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 being able to absorb a lot of the details involved in this. And and I'm hearing for the first time some things that are very helpful from Councilman Branigan. Uh and it alleviated a lot of the concerns, if not all of them. So good work, uh Councilman Branigan on this project and and just to let everyone know, I will be in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I do not see any more hands. Motion by Councilman Branigan, second by Councilwoman McKinney to close the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman McKinney.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, uh.
That was to close the public hearing. We gotta still vote.
Yeah, 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 I know. I just was thanking uh Madam Clerk for that support. And also before we vote, I'd just like to say that you know, I I think that was a well-rounded conversation, starting with Miss Stacy as a constituent to Mr. Dufour as the professional to the committee and to all of our concerns and particularly for Councilman Branigan for going out and and looking to help support the city of Kenner as it relates to our sale tax because every as everyone knows, we live and die by that. So it becomes an an issue for not only the mayor and the economic department, for all of us to understand, it is always a a challenge to to fuse together the the quality of life and the economic concerns of the city and we all have to be but it is the responsibility of Councilman Branigan this particular time and the mayor and the administration to look at it both ways and to make the best decision. I am confident as always, as Councilman Branigan has addressed concerns to his community, to his citizens, that anything arises along with the support from the code department or planning, that we will address this. And you know, I will be supporting it as well and I appreciate again Councilman Branigan, uh you know, aggressiveness to go out as all of us do at times to support the city of Kenner, particularly now during this pandemic that we're going through. So kudos to everyone. So motion by Councilman Branigan, second by Councilwoman McKinney to approve. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
I couldn't, was that me? I couldn't hear you.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman McKinney.
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, you were doing.
Yes, yay.
Thank you. Motion passes seven zero. Item nine B is summary ordinance number twelve thousand eight hundred and fifteen. An ordinance authorized in a public hearing and approving amendment number three to the fiscal year two thousand twenty annual action plan for the proposed Community Development Block Grant for the Community Development Department.
Motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Carroll to open the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman McKinney.
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero to open your hearing.
Mr. Campo, is there anyone in the audience to address this legislation?
I see no hands raised, Councilman.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Carroll. Oh, Councilman Segura, you have the floor.
Well, I would just like to call upon Ms. Shaw to uh explain what this is about.
Thank you, Council.
I was going to close the public hearing and then as we get before we vote, then then to be able to address, but thank you.
Whatever. Whichever.
Thank you. So mo- motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Carroll to close the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman McKinney.
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero to close your hearing.
So before we go into the vote, uh as Councilman Segura alluded to, Attorney Shaw, will you please give us a little update description of this, please?
Hey, excuse me, Council President. Should we put a motion to get it back on the floor for discussion?
Uh we haven't, we have, we discussed during the public hearing if we closed it and.
It it's just a parliamentarian thing. We had a public hearing. We didn't get to hear Ms. Shaw. Now we're ready to vote, but typically we have a motion to get it on the floor and then we open it for discussions amongst ourselves. Council Clerk, is that correct?
Yes, sir. If we could just get your motion and then you can entertain your discussion, please.
Motion by Councilman Segura, second by Councilmember Carroll to approve.
Now we can let Ms. Shaw speak.
Thank you, sir. Attorney Shaw.
Hi, thank you, uh Councilman Segura and Councilman Carroll. Um this um amendment is amendment number three. And as I explained on the last time regarding our funding that we get from HUD, um these are moving targets. So when we see a need, we amend the action plan and this is just put in a public on notice. As I explained last time, that we were trying to secure additional funding for our program because we had a tenant-based rental assistance program for which we had allocated from our original allocation, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Um we've pretty much used all of that funding and we are still paying rent uh for those who are in need who who have been qualified. So we have gone to Jefferson Parish. Um the parish passed the resolution allocating um old funding to the the TBRA program. Because Kenner is in the consortium with Jefferson Parish and St. Charles Parish, we were able to secure an additional three hundred and forty thousand. So instead of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, we now have a over a half a million dollars that we're gonna be going um to put to um helping those who are in need for our tenant-based rental assistance program. Once this is approved, we will send to HUD and then we will open the program to allow for additional um applicants to come in. We're gonna finish paying the rent for those who are already in the program and open a program for additional people to apply for the program. So I think this is the win for the city of Kenner to help more citizens as we move forward.
Thank you, Attorney Shaw. I uh thank you guys for all of y'all's work from your department, uh Councilman Segura, for the support as well. If we do, if I do not see any more hands, council members, please vote.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman McKinney.
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item ten is opening of bids. We have none. Item eleven is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item twelve is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item thirteen is resolutions and motions by council members. Item thirteen A is a resolution recognizing the month of April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Kenner.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, second by Councilmember Segura to approve. And before we vote, again, I would like to ask Attorney Shaw just to give us a little description of uh what this particular legislation is about.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Every year, the city of Kenner, um along with every other municipality and jurisdiction within the United States celebrates April as um Fair Housing Month. Um the history of fair housing is that on the April eleventh, President Lyndon Johnson signed the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, which was a follow-up to the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. The sixty-eight act expanded on previous acts of prohibited discrimination concerning the sale, rental and financing of housing based on race, religion, national origin, sex, and as amended, handicap and family status. Title eight of the act is also known as the Fair Housing Act. Dr. Martin Luther King was assassinated on April fourth, nineteen sixty-eight. Dr. King's name had been closely associated with the fair housing legislation. President Johnson viewed the Fair Housing Act as a fitting memorial to the life's work and wished to have the act passed prior to King's, Dr. King's funeral in Atlanta. Another significant issue during his time period was the growing casualty from Vietnam. The deaths in Vietnam helped fell heaviest upon young, poor African-American Hispanic infantrymen. However, on the home front, these men's family could not purchase or rent homes in certain residential developments on account of their race or national origin. Senators Edward Brooke and Edward Kennedy of Massachusetts argued deeply for the passage of the legislation. In particular, Senator Brooke, the first African-American ever to be elected to the Senate by popular vote, spoke personally of his return from World War Two and inability to provide a home of his choice for his family because of his race. Without debate, the Senate filed with the House and this passage of the act, which President Johnson then signed into law. In nineteen ninety-one, Louisiana passed the Louisiana Equal Housing Opportunity Act, which was deemed substantially equivalent with the fair federal fair housing act. The law was passed in response to the growing concern that citizens of Louisiana were being unfairly denied housing. According to Attorney General, under the both the Louisiana Equal Housing Opportunity Act and the Federal Fair Housing Act, it is against the law to do any of the following based on the person's race, color, national origin, religion, sex, family status, families with children under eighteen or who are expecting or disability. Refuse to rent a set house to you advertised opposed to notice about the sale of rental dwelling where the ad notice indicates any preference, limitation, or discrimination. Provide different terms, conditions, or privileges for certain people. Tell you housing is unavailable when in fact it is available. Show you apartments or homes in certain neighborhoods only. Refuse to provide you with information regarding mortgage loans, deny you a mortgage loan. Different term on a mortgage loan. Deny you property insurance. Refuse to make certain modification or accommodations for persons with mental or physical disabilities. Arrest, coerce, intimidate, or interfere with anyone exercising or assisting someone else with exercising their rights. Anyone who believes they have experienced discrimination in housing based on race, color, national origin, gender, religion, family status, disability can contact the city of Kenner at five oh four four six eight seven five eight eight. Or the Louisiana Fair Housing Action Center at five nine five oh four five nine six twenty-one hundred. In Louisiana, the enforcement of fair housing complaints is handled by Attorney General's Office and they can be reached at two two five three two six sixty-four hundred or one eight hundred two seven three five seven one eight. We're gonna make this information available on the city's webpage um in in light of fair housing month and in any time that people need assistance when they believe that they've been fairly unfairly discriminated against um in the housing area. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Attorney. And if again, if you could forward that information to each one of us so we have the opportunity, if we please, to place it on our uh personal webpage.
I I will do so. It's on the Attorney General's page and I'm gonna make sure that I forward it to you.
Okay, thank you. And again, you know, thank you for your department's work, your work uh as the city of Kenner participates, celebrates, and encourages fair housing for everyone in the city of Kenner and for everyone having interest of coming into the city of Kenner. It's great to have this information and we look forward to supporting our constituents. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman McKinney.
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fourteen is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item fifteen is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item fifteen A is a resolution authorized in a thirty-five thousand dollar increase to the expenditure limit for the purchase of various types of ammunition from Gulf Stage Distributors Incorporated use utilizing state contract number four four zero 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 one six one four eight for the Kenner Police Department.
Motion by Councilman Brennan, second by Councilwoman McKinney to approve. Council members, please vote.
Councilman McKinney.
Um actually, before I vote, I think Chief Glazer has a comment.
Oh, Chief, sorry about that.
Yeah, no, I just want to explain because I got several uh inquiries about this since uh we just had a thirty-five thousand dollar in the uh I guess ordinance in February. We we run off of a state contract that expires every annually, December thirty-first. Uh when the new state contract came out, it was middle of January when we look at it, place our order with the uh the new vendor. We were told that would the ammunition would come in around three months, but with the, I guess, the shortage of ammunition or uh throughout the country now, on our subsequent check on a delivery date, it's gonna be anywhere from seven to nine months. So with that said, we need to actually put another order in before we run out of ammunition due to the required training that we have annually. The state requires so much training. We have multiple uh weapons now. So all this is is just just to an additional purchase of the same amount of ammunition, just so we have it in the pipeline coming in. So that's all it is. Not that we're using more, it's just it's harder now to get ammunition in the country.
Thank you, Chief. Any more comments, concerns? Thank you, Chief. Uh Madam Clerk, council members, plead to approve, vote to approve.
Councilman McKinney.
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yay.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance levying the annual tax mileage rates for the year two thousand twenty-one totaling seventeen hundred mils on the dollar of the assessed valuation of all taxable property within the corporate limits of the city of Kenner, Louisiana on the two thousand twenty-one tax roll. Um give me one second, council members. Please. Item sixteen B is an ordinance accepting the permanent donation of five works of art currently on loan from Henry and Pat Shane. Item sixteen C is an ordinance accepting the lowest and only responsive bid received from Retief Oil and Fuel LLC to provide unleaded gasoline and diesel fuel for the city of Kenner in accordance with seal bid number twenty-one sixty-five ninety in an amount not to exceed six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars annually. Item sixteen D is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of eight hundred thirty-six Dare T-shirts, including shipping at a cost of five thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty cents from Creative Product Sourcing Incorporated, a sole source provider for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen E is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Fabric Tech Incorporated for the installation and replacement of awning at Children's Castle in Rivertown in accordance with letter bid number twenty-one dash nineteen sixty-nine in the amount of ten thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and eighty cents for the Department of General Services. You give me one second, Councilman. I need to make an announcement in regards to the millages, please. Um I need to notify the public that on Friday, April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one at eleven AM, the council will hear summary ordinance number twelve thousand eight hundred and sixteen and ordinance levying the annual tax mileage rates for the year two thousand twenty-one totaling seventeen hundred mils on the dollar of the assessed valuation of all taxable property within the corporate limits of the city of Kenner, Louisiana on the two thousand twenty-one tax roll. If there's anyone in the public wishing to speak on this matter, please appear at the council meeting.
Madam Clerk, can you? Can you repeat that date again before we move on?
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to. It's Friday, April 23, 2021, at 11:00 a.m.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item 18 is new business. We have none. Item 19 is unfinished business and are motions to reconsider or remove from a table position.
Council Clerk?
Yes, sir.
I think as you were reading item 17, I wanted to speak, but it got kind of lost in the shuffle there.
Yeah. So we're going to start with Councilman Segura and then move on after that. Councilman Segura, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to point out to the viewing public and our audience in the Kenner, the governor, as of this coming Monday, has opened up the vaccinations for COVID to everyone with no restrictions above the age of 16. So it's strongly encouraged that everyone seek out a local pharmacy, a clinic, whether it be the parishes, massive shot sites at the Zephyr Stadium or wherever, and make an effort to get your vaccination. We're at this point now where it's working. We're seeing things starting to open up more, and we need to continue doing this to get not only our lives, our family lives, as well as our economic lives back together. So the vaccinations are becoming certainly more available now, and everyone should look forward to reaching out and getting one. That's not the end of the precautions, though, with the vaccination. Certainly, wearing the mask is going to be required for quite some time until we can get a fairly comfortable all-clear from the CDC and whoever that the pandemic is under control. So even though the vaccinations are plentiful, it's still required of wearing masks. So we hope everyone will continue to assist in that endeavor. And with that, as my backdrop shows, the shot, the mask, the heart. Everybody has someone who loves them, and we love someone else. So with that, let's be cognant of all of this and take care of our friends, our loved ones, as well as they will take care of us in heating these proportions of getting the vaccination and wearing the mask so we can come out of the pandemic real soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman McKenney?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to recognize, as you stated at the beginning of the meeting, that it was international and women's, or International Women's, and it's Women's History Month. One of the things that I was doing on my Facebook page was sharing several, or actually seven of, seven women who have impacted the City of Kenner and have been the first in the center. I just wanted to mention them and thank them for their service as well at the council meeting. Charlotte Bernal, she was the first female CAO of Kenner in 1997, and she was also the first CAO in the state of Louisiana. Thank you for her. Michelle Branigan, who was the first female elected to District 4. Chris Severs, the first female Kenner police captain. Betty Benora, who was the first female at-large councilwoman, as well as the first female school board member for District 9. Penny Frame was the first female firefighter in the City of Kenner, as well as in the New Orleans metropolitan area. Our very intimitia, the first was the first female co-director. And Gwen Boynton, who was also, who was the first female clerk of court. Thank you to all those ladies. I know there's many other ladies who were forerunners in the City of Kenner in the future that I'll be recognizing, but I just wanted to thank those and highlight those this month, and I appreciate all of their work in being trailblazers. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We look forward to your recognition as we move on into the year as well. Councilman Brendan, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Council Chair. Just a few things. Tomorrow, 10 to 12 at Kenner City Park is the Bunny Hop Candy Giveaway. It'll be a drive-through event. Only people will enter on Loyola and drive around to the front and be able to pick up candy. Captain Clean and the bunny will be there to help hand out candy. I would like to extend tremendous kudos to our Kenner Police Department, as always, doing a fine job. And there was incidents recently, over the last few months, in North Kenner and, of course, in other regions. And with the great work of the Kenner Police Department and led by Chief Michael Glazer, some recent arrests had been made, and I'd like to ask the chief to expound on that. As well, Jefferson Parish in New Orleans, the New Orleans Police Department just recently announced the safe drop-off sites in Jefferson Parish and setting those up in New Orleans. And in conversations with the chief, he reminded me that we have already had that done and announced at Kenner Police Department complex. And I'd like to ask the chief to expand on that and give us a little information on that. And again, thank you to all first responders and the Kenner Police Department for their great work in getting these car burglaries solved and those guys off the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chief, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Yes, as all of you know, that beginning in December of last year, December 20th to actual the date, we had multiple car burglaries and vehicle thefts in North Kenner, some of the larger subdivisions. Through our crime scene technicians processing the scene with the with the help of all the residents that have cameras on their houses and these ring doorbells, it's becoming apparent now that that's, has to be included in our follow-up investigations. It worked well in the Shell Station homicide even before that. But we were able to develop suspects through DNA that was left, you know, in the cars. Were able to get with St. Charles Parish where they had multiple vehicle burglaries, these, the same group. I say I'll use it as a group because it's a fluid group. It's a bunch of, you know, four to five individuals that come in, mostly in stolen vehicles with switch license plates that we found out from, you know, all the way in the river parishes. So we were able to identify some, we were able to identify some of the vehicles involved just by some of the video. We had suspects. We knew where they lived, so we sent guys out in the neighborhoods in and around the suspects' houses, and we found a lot of these cars we see on videos during the thefts. And the morning, several hours after the vehicles were stolen, we recovered all four vehicles that were stolen in and around, you know, the suspect's house in the neighboring streets. So we finally got enough, I guess, probable cause to get a search warrant in the City of New Orleans. We executed a search warrant with the assistance of New Orleans Police Department, located property that was stolen out of the, I guess, the the Chateau Lakefront burglaries, and we secured arrest warrants. We towed some of the vehicles back here, executed more search warrants, and recovered more stolen property from the City of Kenner, from, you know, St. Charles Parish and other parishes. So as I speak now, we had, the press release went out. We had two suspects in custody and a third was wanted. And literally, five minutes after we sent that press release out, it was follow-up, New Orleans calls and says they arrested the third guy involved in a follow-up to a shooting in New Orleans. So this guy was not the shooter, but he was in a house, you know, with their suspect. So the three people we had arrest warrants for have all been arrested. And we're still actively trying to investigate, identify two or three other people we know that were involved because they look nothing like the people we have, you know, we were arrested. So we know there was at least two more involved in, you know, the two months or the three different nights of the vehicle burglaries and thefts. So, and also with the drop-off, the safe exchange. This has been around for several years. Some police departments dedicate, as you can see, the Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office just dedicated a parking spot in the name of someone that was killed while doing an exchange, a social media purchase and exchange. But we've always advocated, our whole front parking lot is a safe exchange area. We have cameras, you know, shining at the front parking lot 24 hours a day. We do a lot of child custody exchanges in our parking lot and also in our front lobby that some of the parents rather do it inside than in a parking lot. So we've always advocated of, you know, coming here, doing any kind of exchange anywhere in the front parking lot. So whether to, you know, I just didn't, didn't think it was necessary to identify one spot. We just say the whole front complex is a safe exchange zone. And I hope that answers any question. If you have any more, I'll be happy to answer.
Councilman Brendan, did the chief answer your comments, concerns?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chief, for the clarification and the information. And again, to all the men and women and first responders of all the departments. Thank you.
And I'd also like to thank you and Councilman Branigan for the signage. I know Councilman Branigan kind of asked me, you know, what were my thoughts? And he should have asked me about it. I said, look, I said, we put, we put that stuff out on our social media, media, probably not enough, but any help we can to get people to lock their vehicles. Every one of these vehicle burglaries and thefts were unlocked automobiles. There were no broken windows. It just, they simply pull on the handle. If it opens, they first try to start it. You can see some groups try to start it first, and some just rummage through it and try to take, you know, any little valuable. But you can't imagine that we have residents that leave, the car's unlocked, the key's in the car, their wallet's in the car, you know, weapons in the car. I know it's, you think your home is a safe place, but you know, if you harden your target a little bit, you know, it would help us a lot. But the sign and the signage helps. If you drive in these neighborhoods and you see the thieves are out pulling door handles, locking your cars, I welcome it. So anything to get, to get the car door locked.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you, Chief, for the aggressiveness with, Councilman Brennan? Branigan, excuse me. Branigan?
Councilman Bran is the guy with the brown hair, not the gray hair. Just kidding. No, I just want to thank the chief for, you know, for doing what they did. My neighborhood got hit on a Sunday night, then a Tuesday night, and it just, it aggravated the hell out of me. I want to thank Councilman Brennan for giving me the idea. And I was kind of nervous about putting the thieves out pulling door handles again, but you know what? That's facts. And if these signs that Brian and I put out actually got one person to lock that car door, then it was a success. I was blamed for being, trying to politicize it, and it had nothing to do with politics. And the bottom line is, it was a, my thought process is, it's a public service announcement. Make people realize what's going on and know that we have their back. And I know with the KPD, we have their back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Womack?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd also like to chime in and thank Chief Glazer for his good work. And that's, you know, that's why we're ranked so high in safety. Good police work in the City of Kenner and getting the word out, education and these types of issues. It's important to notify our citizens. And so I thank George Branigan for doing that. Councilman Branigan and Brian Brennan, very important in these types of issues. In addition to that, I also would like to give a reminder, it's Friday, and for a linton reminder, fish fries are being held at Divine Mercy Parish Men's Club, 4337 Salantini Parkway, and the Knights of Columbus Hall at St. Rome Chapter 3300 Florida Avenue. Both are open today from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Plates are around $10, so please enjoy. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. I'd just like to say that, as we all knew, know, we had a couple of bad inclement weather days for the past couple of days. That being said, the area along Williams Boulevard, Felix Street, Compromise, and Carwin is always a concern. And as Mrs. Powell has addressed to me, Mrs. Powell is a lady that lives on Felix Street, a real good friend of mine, and, you know, I've been talking to Mrs. Powell about this that predates Attorney Shaw, who's supporting this, all the way back 2012. I spoke with the Public Works Director, just to give a little bit more update information for everyone, for the neighborhood to know that we haven't forgotten about this. We have had some challenges, so I would appreciate if the Public Works Director gave us a little update on this current situation that we're having. Director?
Sure, Council President. Be glad to. I'll start back in July of 2018. Just a little history. That's when we approached GOSEP and FEMA with a request for a change of scope. That request was entertained. It's for about two years. During that two-year period, we received several requests for information, or RFIs. We provided the information, and it was reviewed, and we waited and waited and waited. And finally, in July of 20, the GOSEP FEMA group decided that they would entertain our request, but they said that we would have to provide an environmental assessment. First thing we did was ask for an exclusion to see if we would qualify for categorical exclusion. They considered that and then came back and said, no, we were going to actually have to prepare an environmental assessment. So then we went and we got, we obtained proposals and put all this information together and went back to the GOSEP FEMA group and asked if they, you know, if they would consider including the scope of work and in the actual project amount which they are participating in. So they have not said no, but they are presently reviewing this, and we have prepared a schedule going forward, assuming that they will give us favorable consideration. We estimate now that we would be able to advertise this project in the beginning of next year, January, and by April of the same year that we could begin construction. This is all hinging on a response from FEMA and GOSEP. At this point, we think we have all the kinks worked out of this process, and we expect this to, you know, to be the case. If we begin construction in April, then we would expect completion of the project in April, I'm sorry, in February of 2023.
Thank you, Director, and I appreciate that update, the professionalism and some of the challenges that we have had. I understand the public's concern about it. It's been going on for a long time. But just to let everyone know, the administration, everyone involved, well, we haven't forgotten about this, and we will continue to push this, and hopefully by the beginning of next year, everything has cleared, and we can begin the construction to alleviate some of the drainage issues that we're having in that particular corridor. Thank you, Director. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Item 18 is new business. We have none. Item 19 is unfinished business and are motions to reconsider or remove from a table position. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Thank you. Mr. Campo, do we have anyone?
We do. Mr. Al Morello is up first.
Mr. Morello, you have the floor, sir.
Al Morello, 4260 East Florida Drive, 559 years. I want to reiterate what the mayor said earlier. My thoughts and prayers go out to the victims and the families in Atlanta, Georgia, and Birmingham, Colorado. Make no mistake about it, the evil individuals who perpetrated these crimes are fully responsible for crimes that are committed in these American communities. Free speech had nothing to do with it. Now, what's in the name? I'd like to review some facts I have here. One, the coronavirus got its name because it originated near the Yabala River in the Congo. Okay? The Zika virus got its name because it originated in the Zika forest in Uganda. The Spanish flu, although it didn't originate in Spain, it originated in China. It was called the Spanish flu. The West Nile virus got its name from... The West Nile virus got its name from the West Nile in Uganda. Lyme disease got its name from Lyme, Connecticut, in the United States of America. Now, I've spent four years of my life preserving, upholding for the military, preserving, upholding, and defending the Constitution. As a civilian, I will always speak out for, to preserve, uphold, and defend that Constitution. Now, I continue to call this virus the China virus because that's where it originated from, and because it's my First Amendment right, the freedom of speech to do so. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Who's next? Mr. Campo?
Ms. Stacy?
Ms. Stacy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. Listening to this meeting, just a few things struck me that I'd like to address quickly before I make the comment that I actually came here to make. First, I wanted to tell Mr. Elaine, that was a great presentation that you and your team put together. I know Citizens for Better Kenner is going to have some questions about these millages, and, you know, we'll have some discussion, but, but other than that, just based on the quality of this video, y'all did a great job. I want to thank Pastor Jackie. I always list, I always like hearing when she leads the prayer. She's so charismatic, and, you know, it just really makes you feel good listening to what she has to say. So I want to thank, you know, Pastor Brown for leading us in the prayer today. It was really nice. Couple more things. I wanted to thank Chief Glazer and the KPD for the tremendous job that they do. You know, you know, like the chief said, you know, people are leaving their corridors unlocked, their keys and everything. I think it's just because people feel safe in Kenner. You know, we feel, we don't have all the effects that some neighboring parishes have, and that's largely due to, you know, kudos to the KPD for making us feel that way. But unfortunately, we do have to be vigilant and lock our doors and such because, you know, we don't want to have a false sense of security that just because it is so safe here that things won't happen. But, you know, really, kudos to the chief and the KPD. My last comment, and then I have a quick question, is to Councilwoman McKinney. I really enjoyed following your Facebook and all the women that you've highlighted this month. You know, I know the first council clerk I learned from following you was actually Ms. Natalie's mom. So I didn't know that. And then, you know, all the other women, and we, Citizens for Better Kenner has highlighted Penny Frame as one of our Women of the Month, and I believe she was also the first professional firefighter in the state of Louisiana. And also District Chief. She retired as a District Chief after twenty years. And I know her sister-in-law, who I also personally know, Vicky Frame, was also one of the first volunteer firefighters in the state of Louisiana. So anyway, you know, thank you, guys, for all that, all that good news. And my, my last thing is that I've seen a lot of chatter online about this Musburgerino track. I was hoping that it wasn't over yet, that we could maybe bring that up again and discuss it a little more because people are really upset about it. I see a lot of people online making comments, a lot, a lot, a lot. And then they just, they can't come to the meeting because of work and express their concerns. And a lot of people are asking us, you know, hey, can you please say something for us? I'm still very unhappy that we can't walk at the premier walking track that we paid for. I'm unhappy that this is a district, the reason we're being given is because it's going to be something good, you know, for the whole city, that this is going to bring in income and all this kind of stuff. And, you know, that, well, if that's the case, then why did only District Four put in seventy-five thousand? Why didn't all the other districts put up their district money too? Why was just our money put up? You know, I know it's the city's money, and it's from the treasure chest, and that money is dedicated for capital improvements. But if this, the residents of District Four, particularly use something we've paid for with our district money, we can't use it because it's good for, it's supposed to be good for the whole city, then why are we the only ones that put our money up? But regardless, I want to use the track.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Stacy?
Thank you, Council President. Is there any way that we can bring this back up and we can come to some kind of compromise, some kind of maybe ours or something that the residents who paid for that track and who want to use that track? We don't want to go where the wild animals are, where the ducks are, other parts of the city, less inferior tracks. We want to use that track. Is there a way that a compromise can be made that the citizens, and there are many of us who want to use that track, will be allowed to? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy, and thank you for your comments and concerns. I will, will just say that it is, it is not forgotten by myself, the mayor, or particularly Councilman Branigan from that area. There will be future conversations with the entire council, and we will be addressing this in the future. But if you would give us an opportunity to, to vet some of the concerns from the community, I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Promise you, we will be, we will be coming back to address this. Thank you. Mr. Campo?
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Campo. Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to, to follow up on the comments that Stacy Alessandro had about the Musburgerino track. I also hope that something can be worked out so that the public can also use that track as we have for thirty or more years. And, and, you know, a lot of District Four's money went into that. I realize I don't know how the budget process works. I know where the money comes from. And I know it's because of an ordinance that Councilwoman Jeanne Black insisted on when she was on the council, that money from the treasure chest could only be used for capital improvements, and that a certain amount would go to each council district. And that's where that particular money comes from. And then, what, seventy-five thousand dollars of District Four money was used. We look at that as our playground. I live in this area. We want to be able to use it. We feel something can be worked out so the public can also use it when it's not being used for a track meet. But then I wanted to also thank Chief Glazer for the work of the Kenner Police Department in getting to the bottom of the car burglaries. My neighborhood got hit two or three, four years ago. I realize in this case, the prevalence of video cameras, ring doorbells, et cetera, played a hand, and I'm glad to know that, that the chief recommended Kenner Police Department is a place for making exchanges for, for buying and selling on Facebook or whatever. But I've got a couple of questions, Chief. I know it's apparently well-lit. Is, is the, the video camera surveillance there really good such that if something untoward was to happen, that there would be good video evidence or even the, I mean, and is it monitored? Is there somebody in the, in the, you know, nine-one-one center or, or the dispatch center actually watching the video who will know instantly if something goes wrong? If you can elaborate on that, I would appreciate it, but I really do appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, the, the cameras are good, and, you know, we can zoom in and out, you know, after. And yes, they monitor twenty-four hours a day in our, you know, our communication section. It's on a display board in front of our dispatchers and call takers. Those cameras, and I'm also going to put another plug in for the Project NOLA cameras that you can get on your own house that are piped into our dispatch that are monitored twenty-four hours a day also. But that, that video is stored off-site under that project, but we do have an agreement with them that, you know, we can view them in our dispatch room.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Campo, anyone else?
There are no other hands raised, Councilman.
Okay, so before we close, I'd just like to have a closing statement to say that, you know, I'd like to share something that, that my grandmother shared with me many, many years ago. My grandmother had a fifth-grade education, but was as smart as any, any woman, any man that I knew that went to get a PhD. And I appreciate those comments with her. And one of the things she said that, you know, be careful how you speak in public with people more than twice, she said, because you never want the focus to be about you or that person. You want it to be about the issue, and if you don't be careful, it will begin to look like that, and, and both of you may, may turn out looking, you know, not respectable. So I appreciate that, and I, I really appreciate that. And I'm going to say that I am not trying to make myself as the moral compass for this council or for the public, nor would I ever try to stop anyone from saying what they have to say. But me, I too, and everyone else on the council in the city has a right to say something when they believe something is, is saying unfair. While we all have our own opinions, and I will never stop anybody from doing that, we don't have our own facts, and we should speak when we say stuff as it relates to facts. I think it's the responsibility of each one of us as a council member to be able to ensure to our community that when something is said incorrectly, we as council people will address it for our community. And, and I will continue to do that, and that will be upon every other councilperson to feel, to speak, to say as they please. And that's, I think that's our job, and that's the least that we can do. Thank you. Mr. Campo, if there's no one else. Madam Clerk, we're going to motion to adjourn if no one else has anything to say. Motion?
Don't move.
Motion.
Thank you, guys.